Please rise.
Our dear kind heavenly Father, as we start this meeting tonight, we thank thee for the opportunity to serve. We thank thee for our community in this great land we live in. We thank thee for our ancestors who have come before, paved the way for us to be here. Blessed is Father that we might be mindful of the parties at hand, items at hand, and the parties that are involved, that we can understand their needs and their desires, and we might be directed to do the right things. We thank thee, Father, for all that thou continues to bless us. We ask for decorum and positive nature in our house, as it is in the name of Jesus Christ.
Commission, it's been recommended that we move item number three B up to the front since we'd like to move to have somebody officially directing this meeting in person. Does anybody have any objections to that?
So that's, we need to take care of electing a vice chair, is that the correct motion?
That's correct. Point new vice chair.
It'd be my recommendation to the commission and to the city council that we nominate Mar Wilson to fill that role as vice chair of this commission.
I will second that. We have a motion to second?
I heard a second today.
I, I guess I shouldn't, shouldn't complain or oppose that, so. Any, any discussion on that? Okay, we'll go right to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 You guys out in the Zoom, any opposed? All right, well, that's, that's daunting, thank you very much. With that underway, we have a public hearing. I'm sorry, one, skipping one step. First item is public comment. Any, any public comments that's not related to items that are on the agenda. We have time for general citizen communication on that. If there's any, please step forward. Not seeing any, we'll go ahead with the public hearing. Item four A, public hearing to consider a project plan which consists of a site plan and building elevations for Buck's Ace Hardware in a planned development commercial zone located in the southwest east corner of the intersection of Rachel Drive and Pioneer Parkway. Bust Buckhurst applicant. Will let staff introduce that and turn some time over to the applicant. And then the public, the public will have an opportunity to, we'll open the public hearing at that point in time. Is that you?
Yes, yes, thank you. Okay, this is public hearing to consider a project plan which consists of a site plan and building elevation drawings for a Ace Hardware store in a planned development commercial zone located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Rachel Drive and Pioneer Parkway. So again, this property is already zoned, planned development, commercial, has been for many years, as I understand. The applicant requests approval for his project, applicant's share tonight, Mr. Buckhurst. And the ordinance requires that the planning commission hold a public hearing on the project plan. The project plan consists of the site plan, which will, we have, I also have a hard copy here we can look at, and the building elevation drawings. And so we have both of those before us tonight. The planning commission would hear this request, public comments and all, and then make a recommendation to the city council, who would also hear this then at some point. So let me just jump into the, the site plan. Okay, well. So the site plan, the building is a single level building, flat roof, 24,780 square feet. That consists of both the retail floor area and a storage area, or storage area that's also part of the building. It's, as you can see, it's proposed near the back corner of the lot. When the applicant first approached the city, the staff encouraged the applicant to place the store near the front of the lot with the parking to the side and rear, similar to buildings on the other corners, including the approved Dollar Tree store and the Mount America Credit Union on Kitty Corner. The applicant said he would not do that, wasn't interested in putting the building at the front, said he wanted to proceed under this site plan. So that's the plan we have in front of us. So in, in order to, I guess, meet one of the city goals, where with the city, we had encouraged the applicant to put the building up near the front. In lieu of, of that, they have proposed a plaza. Now you can see on the corner, we can maybe look at that a little more detail later, but for now, you can just see on the corner for this plaza, shade cover, benches, et cetera, right there in, on that front corner. So I won't, I won't go into a lot of detail right now, but that's, that's, that's part of the proposal to kind of try and achieve that effort of making this a, a unique commercial corner that the city's tried to do. Make this kind of a more walkable corner. So you can see the delivery dock is located on the south end of the proposed building, is about 10 or 13 feet from the property line. The site plan shows a 10-foot wide landscape strip plus additional sidewalk width along both Rachel Drive and Pioneer Parkway frontage. The sidewalk width is generally 10 feet, and the adjacent landscape strips as shown on the site plan are both 10 feet wide. A little bit of parking. Based on the city code, the standard of one space per 250 square feet of retail floor area and one space per thousand square feet of storage or warehouse area, the parking requirement would be 94 spaces. The applicant proposes 74 spaces based on his experience with other hardware stores. Staff supports that request, we feel 74 would be adequate. There is in the parking section, give you the citation on that. It goes in 17.32.050. And it's, just gives the planning commission the discretion for not, says non-residential projects to consider all factors in making a recommendation on parking. You know, experience, the type of store, location, you know, all the factors that come in, and make a recommendation to the city council on a number that you feel is adequate. And again, so the code does give the planning commission council the discretion to modify the request. Again, I think staff feels 74 is adequate. The applicant says he feels it's ample, ample parking based on his experience. The parking lot lighting is shielded to direct light downward and not into the adjacent residential areas. So I'm going to move on to landscaping. Landscaping, the zoning code, 17.68.100. Paragraph D, point four, requires the area from the curb to the front setback line, which is 20 feet on the property line, to be landscaped but may include the sidewalk within that area. In this case, it appears the applicant that measured the setback from the curb instead of the property line. And so they're, they've gone back, they have 10-foot sidewalk, 10-foot landscaping. But on this paper print here, the code says from back of curb to the setback line will be landscaped or sidewalk. And so measuring from the property line on Pioneer Parkway, the, the, that code requirement to landscape it to the setback line would require 20 feet of width of landscaping. They're 10 foot shy on Pioneer Parkway, and based on the property line on Rachel, it would require an additional five feet. And again, they show 10 feet wide on each, so. That's just, again, that's, that's fact now. The code also gives planning commission some discretion to approve some variations. Well, we can talk about that, but the, as far as the, the code, they're, they're a little short, 10 feet on Pioneer Parkway and five feet along Rachel Drive. Maybe the, the building elevation drawings, I'm going to have the applicant probably explain them in greater detail. I think they're quite similar, as I understand, to perhaps the the Hurst store, either in Hurricane or the new one next to the Smiths on Riverside Drive. We'll have the applicant or his rep maybe go into a little more detail. So let me just summarize then. The, they get the building height, I think I mentioned, is 25 feet. The ordinance allows a 35-foot high commercial building. I think the exterior walls are mostly stucco with some accent similar, again, to the Ace Hardware near Mall Drive and Riverside Drive. The issues are these. The parking you can modify, the 74 stalls, we can, we can approve their request. The building location, the ordinance has some language, a couple of sections in the PD ordinance. Let me also mention that we are operating under the existing PD ordinance that's been on the books. Now, even though the planning commission recommended revisions to the PD ordinance, the council has not acted on that. They considered, they considered the PD ordinance in a work meeting and kicked around some additional changes and said they want that go back to the planning commission. So that PD ordinance will be on the planning commission agenda for, in August. So we're operating strictly under the current ordinance, planned development zone. In the current ordinance, and I think it carries over into the, in the pending, says in section 17.68.100, paragraph F, says strip commercial with front parking is generally not acceptable. And then another section, it also says parking should be located to the rear, side and rear or underground. In both of these things, it says should, you know, it's, it's, it's an advisory thing. It doesn't say shall, it says should, so there's some, some discretion. The landscape strip, I've gone over that there. If you measure again the way the code reads, curb to the setback line, that's approximately, well, again, long Pioneer, it's about a 30-foot distance, and they've gone 20 feet back. Under the current code, the current ordinance, and we've talked in the past a little about the confusion, it, it says in, in not only residential, but in the commercial zone, there'll be 30% open space. And so that we have removed from the pending, but it's still in the current ordinance. And so when that's come up in, in Dollar Tree and the others, apparently the practice has been that they've considered parking lots as part of the open space. So anyway, that's, you know, that, I think that's been removed because that's been a little confusing in the code. And we've, in the pending ordinance, that's been cleaned up to make the requirement just a landscape requirement and in, at least in the commercial zone, and not have an open space, which is appropriate for, obviously for residential. So anyway, under the present ordinance, there is a 30%, and it says 25% of the, of the, 25% of the open space requirement shall be landscaped. I think they would, they would meet that with the landscape width that is, that we've already talked about along the roads, especially if those were the 20 feet wide on Pioneer and 15 on Rachel, that, that would be. So there, again, in the ordinance, there's a couple of sections that talks about flexibility. There's a section in the landscape section that says the planning commission may recommend deviations from the landscape standards to the council. And also in the very last chapter of the, or the last paragraph of the PD ordinance, it talks about the planning commission being able to recommend modifications to the height and setback standards to the city council. So again, you have some, some flexibility in those. I think that's all I have, unless you have questions for me. I, I really didn't go into detail on the elevations. I did let the applicant explain his building design. So if, if we, if you don't have questions for me, then maybe we'll just ask the applicant.
I have a quick question, Bob. I didn't understand exactly what you were saying about the setbacks. Clarifying that just a little bit, this is James' call.
James, we can't hear you.
Speak up a little bit.
Can you hear me okay, Bob?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. I, I didn't understand exactly what you were explaining about those setbacks and the 15 and the 20 feet. Would you mind just reviewing that one more time? I apologize about that.
Okay. The pointer, well, I'll work on the overhead.
I can't see the overhead very well, so I'm trying to see it here on my, on my PDF.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, that's a good point. So this, the, the ordinance says the landscape requirement, that the area from the curb to the setback line, the setback is measured from the property line. And this dark line, right where the hand is, is the property line. And so from the property line, measuring back, that, that 20-foot setback is about two-thirds the way through what is now parking stalls.
Okay.
If you measure the 20-foot setback from the property line back, for some of you can see this paper print, you know, I highlighted the yellow is that additional area. The applicant's apparently measured that setback from the curb, but setbacks are measured normally from property lines. And so along Pioneer Parkway, if you take the property line and go back 20 feet, then you're approximately in, into here. Rachel Drive, the right of way on Rachel's a little different, so it's a little different situation. That, they have a five-foot sidewalk, which is within the, that, the additional sidewalk area is within the private lot area. Then they have the 10-foot landscape area, so they have the 15 feet. They're actually, you know, per code, five feet shy on Rachel.
So what would they have to do to, to meet the code, Bob?
Say again.
What would they need to do to make that code, meet code with the current code?
Well, there's, there's two options. There's, there's two options. There's widen out that landscape strip, which says, you know, again, 20 feet from, from the setback line. And if you go 20 feet back from their property line, you're back there. That would, that would increase the width of that. Same thing on, on Rachel Drive. Or the planning commission would have to recommend a modification of that standard to the council. So, I mean, it's either recommending a modification and, and feeling comfortable with the 10-foot or asking the applicant to go back to the drawing board.
Okay, that's, that's, I just wanted to clarify that, thank you, Bob.
Any other questions for Bob? I have for, just another thing I forgot to indicate, there's two commission members that are obviously on Zoom, so they're participating that way. I, I'm assuming that since there's empty chairs, that there's not anybody in the overflow. But we do have an overflow for, for people. I guess we don't have to go into that since nobody's there. So that's, that simplifies things for us. Would the applicant want to come up and talk about it?
Thanks for letting us come and make this presentation. We're excited. My name is Buckhurst. And also Brandon Hall, who's our architect, is here, and he'll obviously do the technical parts that you guys want, not me. But I want to start with actually a couple of things and then roll to what Bob has stated. We've met with him twice to review those things, or I think we can work out those issues without really any problem at all. Depending on how you want to do the parking, how much parking we have, and how easy that is to get in and out of the business. I want to give a little history. The Hurst variety was started in Panguage, Utah, 1946. And moved to St. George in 1957 on First North, across from Tabernacle. Stayed there for a lot of years with my mother and, and part of the time with my dad. And we moved to Bluff Street on, in 1973. Existing Ace store that's there was my brother, my mother, me. After a while, and in 82, we bought a store in Hurricane, and 83, I went to Hurricane and bought that store and moved to Hurricane and been there ever since. An Ace Hardware store. We've added as much space as we could to it, it's now 19,000 square feet. And it's a terrific store for those that have been there. We finally decided to grow a while ago and started working on it and eventually ended up on Mall Drive. And that store literally is two years old next week. And it's a beautiful store, it's about 18,000 feet with lawn and garden addition to the side of it, those who have been in it. And so we decided, we'd actually looked at Santa Clara a number of times. Got a lot of requests from the community through the years, I mean, a lot. And so we actually worked with Harmon's for a minute, but that little building was too small for us, the one that's next to them there. And finally started to work on this and got permission from Ace, worked really hard with Ace for a couple of years. Hard to get permission. We got permission for the site and back the area. So we don't have to go on the side if we, with Ace. And we'd like to open this store sometime in the fall of 2021. Our stores are really quite exceptional. Ace has a program called Pinnacle. It's our highest award for stores. The Hurricane store is a pinnacle store. And seven years ago, when they started the pinnacle program, we became a pinnacle store. There's 5,000 Ace Hardware stores, of which there's about 400 that have made pinnacle periodically. This last year, we got a letter from the president of Ace Hardware stating that the Hurricane store was a pinnacle store again, and that we were one of only 37 stores in the whole country that had achieved that seven straight years in a row. It was a terrific store. And on top of that, the new store on Mall Drive achieved pinnacle in its first full year, which was last year, which was one of only three stores in the nation that accomplished that as well. We will be a pinnacle store here. You will be very proud of this beautiful new Ace store that we're coming to town. It's a full-line hardware store, but it's bigger. Ace's traditional stores are about 10,000 square feet. This store will be about 23,000, I think, to sell. And so it's a lot larger, so it has a full-line hardware department. It has five niches, foreign goods, paint, lawn and garden, home deck and toy. And it has a beautiful Christmas assortment that we have every year that will draw a lot of people from throughout the area. That we do that as well. And also, we have a full-line steel power equipment. We're one of the best in the state in that. Our hours are from eight in the morning till nine at night. We're closed on Sunday. People, we've got a lot of grief on that through the years, but it is a Sunday closed business and will remain a Sunday closed business. I wanted to say something about, we'll hire 30 to 40 people. The one I'm most proud of will be one of the great blessings to this community is we hire kids. And we'll have 10 to 15 young men and young women that will work for us. And I belong to the Arizona Dealer Group, and most of those stores down there close at seven. And if I had them here and you interviewed them, they would all say, we close at seven because we don't want to hire the youth. We don't trust them anymore, they're too difficult to hire, and the list. Why are you open, Buck? So that we can fire, provide an opportunity for the youth. So that they'll have a great place to work. And to start, I've always said, I've interviewed every young person that's ever worked for us, and I've always said to them, you are starting with the very best job you'll ever have as a beginning job in your life. And I believe it, and I want to make that here to you, that this is a benefit and a blessing to this community and to the youth of this community. We're dedicated to the community. I've been dedicated to this community in so many things that I've done. And my family has been raised, all my kids here. And a little corner plaza, which is actually going to be a big corner plaza by recommendation, because in order to make that building fit, get approval from Ace Hardware, which they would not allow us to put it in the corner, it has to be there. We can't make the, the, the business work by putting it in the front of the corner instead of the back. That parking lot's got to be in front of that business. I could bring you 100 Ace Hardware pictures from 100 stores, and there isn't one of them at the parking lots behind them. Parking lots in, buildings behind and the parking lots in front. Everybody will be driving to the store. But we actually were excited about the plaza because we wanted to do that. It will be open to the community, we'll do car washes there and things with the school, things with the community. It'll be available. And the parking lot will make it that much easier for them to be seen from the road and visual, put their signs and tell people they're having what they're having. It'll be a great place, we'll do it, we'll do it really nice, open in great landscaping. You have to deal with that, that'll be an issue that you will need to make in terms of the size of the parking lot and how much space. So I encourage you to look at that, that design and most likely, hopefully, make it an exception there. Because there will be a big, it's a 10-foot sidewalk and 10-foot of landscaping should be, I believe, adequate for that corner. Want to say one last thing, and then any questions that you have, I'll turn it over to Brandon Hall, who's here. Or any questions that you might have for me. It's been a long time coming. This will be one of the real This will be one of the real blessings to this community. It needs to be successful too. We have to make a profit. We have to make it to where we can employ people. It'll have twenty-eight thousand SKUs in it. Home Depot has thirty-four thousand. It'll have a wise selection for our community to shop in. And also the Harmon's, which also the store is in the behind and the parking lots in front. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll entertain them or turn it over to Brandon for any technical things.
I have a couple of questions that maybe you can address. Why does Ace feel so strongly about having to have a parking lot in front rather than what is we've established as somewhat of a standard in that area?
The visual part of the building, be able to look and see the building, the signs of the building, the fronts of the building, the access to the building. It's critical for success when Ace Hardware store is flat critical. They want you to see the store from the street and not have to go around to see.
That's their marketing strategy.
So if I can follow up with Mark, Mark's question. So just so I understand, you're saying that out of the four or five thousand stores you mentioned around the country, that none of them are built in areas designed for walkability?
I'm, I don't know that for a fact. I don't know about five.
That actually was my next question, so.
But but I can, I can give you a hundred stores out of, out of the dealer group I'm in in Arizona. All the stores that I can point to in Utah. They all have the stores behind the parking lot, all of them. All the dealer group I'm in has it. In fact, I've been to more different groups in California. Everyone, there's none, none on the corner in the parking lot. It's just not the strategy for Ace and the way they planned the building. They, I they will not approve it.
So a follow up to that then is why would you put an Ace, why would you want to put an Ace Hardware here or propose that if you know that the city has those kinds of guidelines?
Why would I do it with that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's to me, it seems almost like if somebody were to put, you know, some other type of business that wouldn't be approved by the city because of the zoning or other guidelines that are in place.
Well, I don't know how to answer that, only that we think it's the right thing to do and the right thing for the city. But it would actually be a better location for that building, for that size of store than it would to be put it on the corner. I mean, there are, it's a suggestion for a walking community. This is not a walking community for our kind of store. So I, we, I, to be honest with you, I did not believe this would be an issue with the council.
Bucky, this is your architect right here behind you, right? No?
Brandon in the back row.
Okay, you're gonna have to wait your.
I, okay.
James' call.
That answers my question.
James.
That answers my question. Thank you.
He's the one right in the middle.
Yeah, hello. I see you waving his hands.
And your architect?
Who's Brandon's back here?
Oh, that's why I didn't see him. You're standing in front of me. All right. Does anybody have any other questions for Buck?
I, one question, Buck, you talked about the size of your other stores. This one is significantly larger. Can you explain the reason behind that? You talk about twenty-eight thousand SKUs, which I understand all those things. Why is this store so much larger than the other stores you put up?
Wow, we, because we had two acres instead of an acre.
You wanted to make it your flagship.
We'd love to do more and ground it there. And the only thing we could do when we built Mall Drive is we had to go back to the city and they approved the four thousand foot garden center back in the back side so that we'd have at least that space. But the plan for the building was already approved and done or
Right, that's part of that.
Tried to take that other side and it was gone. Okay, that's why.
So I have.
I'll say one more thing is that we're pretty dedicated to make this a big part of the community more. Make this one of the nicest stores in the state of Utah in terms of A stores. Cost a lot of money to do it, a lot of time and attention, but we're pretty dedicated to this community, so.
Great, okay, I'm Brandon Hall with MRW Design. Jeff Mathis is the Architect of Record and I'm the Project Architect. I don't know if you have the site you can put back on the screen or or whatnot, but. Excuse me. So as you can see, you know, there's a little reduction in landscaping, as you've discussed on the street sides, but an increase in usable and public space and landscape on the corner, which is that plaza area as well as shade structures and benches that, you know, enhances the street, enhances the pedestrian usability and access. And so that's a, an improvement that's, you know, if you were developing this in another location, for example, that would normally not be provided and it's being provided here as a as a way to enhance the street and also find a way to meet the intent of the code while also be able to, you know, let this building be here and be provided for the community. Be, and let me address the location of the building. Now, the ordinance talks, uses language like should or it's encouraged that the building be located on the street or in the corner. And and those intents are for, you know, an urban walkable environment where pedestrians use multiple stores and cross the street, use other stores and that, and that is possible and usable in this location. Usually typically that condition works with putting a building on the corner when the buildings are smaller. If you notice across the street currently, the bank and the other buildings, those are smaller buildings in scale, so it's easier for pedestrians to see other buildings and walk around them and access them as well as possibly access them from the street side, although that's usually not the case. When you have a larger building like this or like the Harmon's across the street, it becomes a little more problematic when you try and move such a large building to the corner. Because one, it blocks the view of pedestrians from being able to kind of see how you get in. And then there's also this large mass of building that they have to walk around to get to the front door. So that's typically why in urban environments, smaller buildings and smaller stores with storefronts are on streets and corners. In this case, where we have a larger building, it doesn't make sense to move to the corner because it's scale and also the access to it. There's one front door and and that's how the Ace building works for security, for just usability. A lot of stores are like that and it would have to be, you know, inward and create a longer distance for pedestrians to walk and whatnot. And there's no, there would be no other windows facing the street. So if we did put the building in the corner, it'd be a big blank wall in all directions, which would not enhance the street. So we feel like this position, including the plaza and the building location, is actually a better and a good alternative to the, to that.
You don't feel that if you were to put this on the corner and you were to do the facade so they look like they windows and look like they were the front of the store, that would make a difference?
So you could, it's possible you put windows there. It messes up the store.
I'm not seeing windows that have to be windows. There's ways you, yeah.
So some kind of decoration and fake windows that you've seen in some other places. That might help the the look of it, but you still have the problem of people really can't access it and they have to walk all the way around anyways. And if they're across the street, they might just say, forget it. I'm just going to get in my car. And ninety-five percent of the people coming here or more are going to be coming in their car anyways.
So Mr. Hall, if you don't mind me asking another question about that.
Go ahead, James.
Yeah, so you mentioned about how it's typically done in certain areas. What, what sources are you familiar with in your in your studies of walkability?
Well, if you want to just Google walkable cities, there's a million pictures that'll show up.
Have you, are you familiar with like walk scores and places like that? Are you, are you, have you guys checked out that?
Blocked stores?
Walk scores?
Walk scores? Oh, yeah.
You're pretty familiar.
I don't know how to apply that here in this location.
Yeah, so it's interesting because as we've met with different organizations around the state, it seems to me that there's, there's a movement towards walkability and I, you know, I know Walmart's building a new headquarters and they're designing all this stuff to be walkable. So this is, for me personally, this is a pretty huge issue. It seems to me like it was taken pretty lightly to be honest with you and your design because maybe it wasn't in harmony with what you guys wanted to accomplish. But if you look at designing for walkability and you can just Google that, you can see that one of the key factors is orienting the buildings to the street and creating open spaces. And placing the parking behind or below buildings like Bob mentioned. And so those, those to me look like they were just completely brushed aside in your plan. And I, and I'm not, I'm, this is, we're going to have the public hearing and all the neighbors are going to talk about this. And I don't know how the other members of the planning commission feel. But this is a long-term design. The walkability adds value to the homes in the area. It's going to be in the, over the long term, this is a long-term investment. The city of Santa Clara is making in this type of construction and this type of planning. And for us to change that, to facilitate your project, to me is just not harmonious with what we're trying to accomplish in the long term. I personally would be opposed to this plan for that and maybe a couple of other reasons, but just the, just like we're not going to do it and Ace Hardware doesn't like it. That to me is not a compelling reason to change the code or change the practice. And now we have the other corner that we just had a big group of meetings with the folks at Dollar Tree and we went over some of these same issues with them. And so I think that for me, this is a huge issue. I think it's a big issue for the future of our city. And if we're going to go back and build with the plans and the ideas from the seventies and eighties, I don't think that's harmonious with what we're trying to accomplish here.
Do you have a direct response to that? I think we need to get on to the, get on the public hearing.
Okay.
I just want to mention though, that what we have provided and designed is walkable and addresses both pedestrians and vehicles. I mean, it's as drawn.
Okay, thank you. We'll give you a chance to come back up at the end of the public hearing if if you need to. All right, we'll go ahead and and open the public hearing. Please be polite and respectful. I'm sure you will be. You know, if somebody's made a point, you don't have to remake the point ad nauseam. Simple ditto would do. But the time is now yours to come up to the mic and and
I'll go first.
State your name and address for the record.
So my name is Frank Delana. I live, if you pull up the plan there, my entire backyard backs up against that twenty-five foot tall beautiful looking wall there. And I've got two reasons, which haven't been talked about here at all. And I'm not going to go into whether you think that it's a benefit or a or not to have that twenty-five foot wall ten feet away from your property line. Just try and put yourself in my shoes. I just bought that house less than a year ago. I knew that that was commercial property. I was hoping that something nice would be moved in there. I certainly was not hoping that it would be ten feet away from my backyard. And I certainly wasn't hoping that the warehouse where you're going to be storing flammable and explosive chemicals, paints, thinners, pre-mixed two-stroke engine fuel, all highly explosive, Roundup, which there was just a big lawsuit with Monsanto for the, it's, you're talking about carcinogens and dangerous chemicals that are ten feet away from where my children are going to be playing. That's ludicrous. This is not a commercial zone. It's a, it's a residential area. I was excited at first when I saw the sign Ace Hardware because it's a family type, small hardware store. Yay for Ace Hardware going up against Home Depot and all those other big names. I like them. I chop at them. But I do not want that thing ten feet away from my backyard. The other thing that nobody has talked about here, which putting it in on the corner of the street would also remedy is that this plan is extremely unfair to the residents along that lot. I myself, a hundred percent of my property line is affected by it, whether you want to look at it as positive or negative. My neighbors to the to the, I guess that's the north, yeah? The Perez's, they couldn't be here because this, this meeting was originally listed as the public couldn't come. We had to do it on YouTube. And then just today, it was listed as, oh, you, yeah, you can come. Unfair again. They're super mad and they've only got sixty percent of their property line that's affected by it. Then Martin is here too. About forty percent of his property line is affected by it. But me, it's a hundred percent. That's unfair and discriminatory. You want to talk about grounds for a lawsuit? Discrimination. You're discriminating against me relative to the other people who have zero impact. So, I mean, I love Santa Clara. We just moved here. My dad's lived here for, he's had a house for ten years here. We love it. I'm excited about it. But this is not what I would envision would happen in Santa Clara, an industrial thing put right in the middle of a residential a residential zone. And, you know, ditto with the, the other three location corners. I won't say anything more about that. Lockspun said. But it looks to me like this building is too big for that lot. It needs to be moved out to the corner. It needs to be made smaller. And there's, I don't see why you can't put entrances on three sides of it. They make doors, lots of them. The guys who sell doors wouldn't be opposed to putting three doors in there. There's no problem with that. There's lots of stores that do have back and side entrances, front and back. Including most of the stores at the malls. Bigger stores. So, yeah, that's about all I've got to say. I'll leave some time for other people. Thank you.
I'll just mention that we also have at least six other online comments, people who are participating by Zoom. So we'll get to their comments, I guess, at the end.
All right.
Hello, Martin Tidwell. I'm at three, five, seven, six Sage Rush Drive. Bob, I sent in an online comment yesterday, so there's, you don't need to read that. I wasn't sure, I didn't know that we were going to be able to be here today. James, appreciate very much your comments on the design for the other three corners. I was involved in the, in the Family Dollar store meetings very extensively. And Family Dollar had the same reaction as Ace, as you recall. They did not want to put their store at the, at the corner. But in the, at the end of the day, they realized the opportunity they had by having a store in this area and they were willing to make accommodations. I too am a shopper at Ace. I prefer to go there versus Lowe's or Home Depot. I just feel like it's more family oriented and, and it's I just feel like it's more family oriented and, uh, and it's just a great place to shop. And I'd love to have it in our community, uh, but I also do not want a twenty-five foot wall ten foot off of my back. My back, my back wall. Uh, I know, and Bob, you've mentioned this every time, and we, we understand that this is commercial and it's zone commercial, it's PD commercial actually. And I understand we're also trying to make, uh, changes to the, to the rules on that. And, and, and that's fine. I guess the city can do what they want to do on that. Um, when Buck mentioned that he, that all Ace Hardware's are, uh, set in the traditional, as James mentioned, the seventies and eighties kind of feel with the, with the business in the back, a part claw in the front. I just did a quick search and I know you're not gonna be able to see this, but this is an ace in a walkable neighborhood with the door facing, uh, facing the, uh, uh, the street. So I, they do, they do exist. Um, so I would, uh, urge, uh, the planning commission to be consistent with what we have required of those other three corners. Um, and, uh, I, I think that if we do, if the city does approve this particular location that potentially could open up option, open up issues with, uh, with Dollar Tree, they may come back to you looking for revision to move their store to where they wanted it to be originally, back towards, back towards the, uh, the residences. Uh, I know that the, the PD zoning is in flux and there's, uh, changes being made. But one of the things that is talked about there in several places in the PD zoning is a buffer zone between residences and, uh, and businesses. Granted, the setbacks stated are ten feet in the back. Um, but it also talks about keeping it, um, keeping a buffer zone between, uh, between the residences and the building. So, uh, that's my comments. I'll stick around if there are any other questions.
Thank you, Martin. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Brian Reed. I'm at three, six, oh, four Sagebrush Drive. Um, I wasn't actually planning on saying anything today. I mostly just wanted to see how Buck's plan was gonna jive with how I know the commission's been planning things. Um, but I do have a few comments. Um, one of the things that I have a comment on is, is looking at the building. It's a very claustrophobic feeling, even just looking at the plan. It looks like it takes up about forty-five percent of the overall land. It's, it's massive looking. Um, and as a, as a neighbor of this, I, I can understand what everyone else has said. And I say ditto to it of how it's gonna feel like we're just boxed in by this massive thing. And that's coming from somebody who has the original perspective of, I'd rather have the building in front of my house. So I have at least a little bit of privacy, cause right now I'm like in a big fishbowl with, I'm open on every side. So I actually have the opposite. I would love it if it was in front of my house, but, um, I understand where my neighbors are coming from and I say ditto to that. And I understand where the city's coming from too, with the walkability. Um, the one thing that I always, that I struggle with this, and you might remember my comments during the Dollar Tree planning, is that in the, in the code, it says that there should be a traditional storefront on the street. And the Dollar Tree has a storefront behind it. And that's right next to the parking lot. And it says the parking lot should be behind the building. But if you're making the front of the building right next to the parking lot, then really the parking lot's still in front of the building. You just oriented it in a different way. That's my big struggle with this pushing the buildings out, is having the storefronts facing the back. Um, so, so my, one of my main comments is if, if we are gonna keep consistent with this plan, which it seems like the city wants to, um, to me, I, I, I would like to highly stress that storefront on the street part of the plan. I feel like that's in, in, in instrumental to making it work for the walkability. It might be inconvenient for the people in the parking lot to have to walk to the side, you know? But to me, the for storefront, if it's gonna be pushed out, should be on either Rachel or Pioneer Park. And that's how I felt with the Dollar Tree also. Um, so I think that's kind of my main comments on that. As far as me being a neighbor, um, my only huge issue with this as is, is generally is the size of it. It doesn't look like there's very much landscaping at all, no open space feel. I do like the little drawing I saw of the corner. I thought that was a really neat little touch. I, I actually thought that was really cool. Um, and then the fact that the, oh, oh, yeah, the one last thing I wanted to mention is the fact that on many of the other stores, it looks like you guys, uh, the city has, has tried to push it. So the trash bins and all that the delivery areas are kind of more in the open, kind of forcing the businesses to keep everything clean and tidy. And the, the, the way this is designed is it's kind of like that back corner could be Ace's dirty little secret, where they just keep junk and trash and that alleyway feel that, I think it was, uh, Jared Wade made the comment that we're trying to keep that little, that little hidden alleyway, you know, kind of feel where junk and trash and garbage and cardboard gets thrown at. So that would, that's another one of the main things that I would like to see be put somewhere else in this design too. So I think, I think that's all I have to say. Unless there's any responses or?
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Going once?
Should we go to the?
Let's go to the online. Yes, thank you.
Okay, we've got five total and they are all for the Bucks Ace Hardware. First one is from Elaine Lloyd at thirty-five ninety-eight Sagebrush Lane in Santa Clara, Utah. Comment, uh, my concern with this proposal is with the location of the building. First of all, it is only ten feet from my backyard. Secondly, the building would, would be twenty-two feet high. This has always been in question with the rules of the city council and was not allowed. Will this building have windows on the side which face my backyard? Will the wall in my backyard be higher than it is now? I do not think the building location should be different than the location of other buildings, which are in the corner of Pioneer and Rachel. Again, that was from Elaine Lloyd. Now we have another Lily Lou, thirty-five sixty-one Robin Court, Santa Clara, Utah. Didn't we just go through this with Dollar Tree? How is this even being considered? Stop wasting everyone's time and represent the people you were elected to, not to, not your good old boyfriend, not your good old boy friends interested, interests. This is such a bad idea. It's hard to know where to begin. And no other place in Santa Clara has anyone, has anything like this been allowed? It's an effort to the, into the neighborhood and completely out of character with the three other businesses at the intersection. Reject this plan. Very, very bad idea. Okay, Lori Banish Perez, thirty-five sixty-eight Robin Court. I will start by mentioning how highly inappropriate it is to hold this meeting in a closed forum. This is not a public hearing if you deny the public the ability to attend the public hearing. And this makes this only a meeting. This building impacts several homeowners and you're giving us no live interaction to have or concern, concern addressed and questions answered. The proposed location of this building is absolute nonsense and a bless, blessed disregard for the families who will be directly affected by the placement and size. Our backyard shares the longest stretch east wall with this lot. The building is one story, but it's going to be twenty to twenty-five, um, feet tall. Why? Why is this building planned to set only ten feet from our shared wall? Only thirty feet from our front door, from our back door. From every window in our home, we will be bombarded with the view of a twenty-five foot high wall. From our entire backyard, the only thing visible will be a twenty-five foot high wall immediately behind our shared wall. This is, wait, is this not a fire hazard? Emergency vehicles cannot fit between a ten-foot gap. Why is this building not required to sit front-facing and against Rachel? At least this would ease some of the feelings that were trapped by the wall we cannot see over or around. I look forward to the next public hearing so the homeowners can have their concerns addressed and questions answered. Angela Atkinson, thirty-five fifty-five Robin Court, Santa Clara, Utah. Santa Clara has always been picky about the laws, zoning codes and businesses we allow in our area. The current issue is no exception. I am sad and frustrated to be presented with the current conflict. Please require Ace to finish all sides of their buildings. Requiring, regardless of what happens, residents on Robin Court, Sagebrush and Rachel Drive will have their current view compromised. Please require, please require all structures to provide some beauty to replace what is lost to us. Please limit Ace structure, please limit Ace's structure height. It seems unnecessary to build anything that would tower over the current neighborhood homes. Let's maintain our small-town community feel. This is why people love to vacation here and ultimately the reason to expand business in our area. Please hold Ace to the same requirements we have laid out for other businesses. Make allowance for Ace to disregard what has been required for Dollar Tree and others only brings contention to our opia. Ace should be required to face Pioneer Parkway and avoid costly and unnecessary lawsuits. I recognize this need for this growth. I think Ace will be a great contributor to our area and economy. This comes with an understanding that I will deal with increased traffic, trash, lights, security issues and noise. I'm willing to deal with all of that if the incoming business, businesses will recognize my need to preserve my neighborhood slice of heaven to extend possible. Thank you. Okay, this is the last one. Tina Gubler, thirty-four seventy-eight Sagebrush, Santa Clara, Utah. Hello, I hope that you, as city council members, will remember your job to uphold the ordinance that applied to our city for those coming to build retail stores. Buck is not above those ordinance that were applied to, to the Dollar Tree when they tried to do the same thing. The store needs to be put along Pioneer Parkway as the ordinance is set forth. Please do not allow Buck's store to back up to the homes along Sagebrush. The neighbors would literally be staring up at the building from their lower elevation lots and would throw off the whole purpose of having stores back up to Pioneer Parkway with three in compliance and one not. Please do not allow the plan that Buck has proposed to go through. It would be very unethical to allow personal relationships to interfere with what the city ordinances and what you just put Dollar Tree through to enforce same ordinance that Buck is trying to go against. For the sake of people who live by, drive by and stop and shop at the businesses on Pioneer Parkway, please continue with the uniformity of the other three corners. Do not allow personal influence to go against your better judgment, judgment. And please enforce ordinance that was created for all four corners. I know Buck is a friend of some or all of you and I understand you wanna help. But this is a job for you, our Santa Clara City Council, to uphold those laws and ordinance that are in place for a better, to better our community. And thank you and appreciate the time and effort that you each put in your, in our behalf to make our city better. You are amazing for what you do and understand the hard job that is and the crap that is thrown at you and said to you regarding some of these difficult situations. Please consider the people that live by these businesses and try to end, understand what we are being put through as business, businesses that come in and what, wanna change what the city has planned out. And that creates a burden to those of us directly in the line of fire. Thank you for your time and please do not allow Buck to be built backing up to the neighbors. I'm not great with words and I'm sure I'm repetitive, but I feel that it's very important that you represent our city, the people that live here to the best of your ability, even if it's a hard thing to do. Thanks again for all you do to help make Santa Clara the wonderful city it is. Tina Gubler.
Very good. That was the last one then. Anything further before we ask the commission for? Sure. Might as well.
So when I was talking about buffer zones, um, I'm thinking, I'm thinking specifically about the way Mountain America did their, uh, did their development. They've got that kind of buffer, if you will, uh, landscaped area between their parking lot and the other, the other properties, the property just to the west and the property to the north. Um, that's how I think this ought to be, um, to maintain kind of the, the look and feel that we're really looking for. Thank you. Thank you.
Commission? Any comments, questions?
I, I think we need to answer a couple of the accusations and comments that were made by the public hearing. Uh, number one, we're not the city council. We're the commi, we're a commission. Um, we are not elected. We volunteer our time. We're here at the request of the city council and the mayor to do so. We're your neighbors and we don't appreciate the accusations that are flown at us about me and the Good Old Boy Network and that we're getting collusion, cause there has not been one bit of collusion taking place. And I take very, very large contempt at these comments. I've lived here twenty-nine years. I don't need to be accused of those types of things. It's not necessary. Buck is a lifelong friend of mine, but when I walked through that door, I put my relationships aside. So I just think we need to put an, an end to that type of nonsense. Secondly, the building is within the ordinances, totally within the ordinances. Should or shall, and these kind of conditions come into play? But we need to understand that ten foot is an accepted tolerance for emergency vehicles and within the ordinance. I totally understand where you're coming from with a twenty-two foot back wall. I also feel very strongly that we need to be consistent. So as I urge my councilman, love what you wanna do, Buck. I really, really do. But I really feel strongly about the consistency of staying out on the corner. So that's my two cents. Uh, that's, that's where I feel about it. I really wanna see this go. We need this in our community for more than one reason. But we do need to try and be consistent and that's a hard place to be. I'm done.
You have anything?
I would agree with Jared Call's questions earlier and statements and also Mark's statements. I, it's hard to change things now where we fought some of the battles we did with the Dollar Tree situation and, um, but I think this building and this business in our community is awesome and it needs to happen for what it does, especially for that area. But I think that consistency needs to, needs to be a part of it. So I hope we can go back and figure some way that we can get this part of our community and still make everyone happy, or at least to what we've, that, what we've set out to accomplish so far.
Do you have anything?
Um, I don't know Buckhurst, but I respect the contribution that they've given to our community with the other Ace Hardware's and different things. And I too agree that this would be a real asset to Santa Clara. It looks like it might be too big for that piece or need to be redesigned.
Brian?
Um, yeah, I, I actually know Buck. He's a great guy, but. So, uh, uh, several months ago, when I got appointed to this, we talked a lot about the urban street fill. And, uh, and looking into it, you know, before this or before the Dollar Tree, the Dollar Store, um, I looked at it and I got kind of excited about it. I thought it was such a great idea. And I was glad that the city was kind of putting that forward and, uh, and glad that they stayed consistent with the, with the challenges we've had with other people trying to do it. So I think, you know, I Googled some images as well and there are some good ideas. It's probably something that could be maybe a pinnacle. Maybe it could be a store that they could build that might change the way that Ace Hardware's are built. Maybe it could be a store that they could build that might change the way that ACE Hardwares are built. Because I think if they did move it out to the front and maybe had multiple entrances, one off the street and one off the parking lot, I think some good things could be done. I think they maybe need to go back and kind of research that and see if there's something else that fits.
Okay, thank you. Mark on the Zoom?
Yes, I'll chime in. First off, I love, can you guys hear me okay by the way? Okay, I love Hearst. I go there all the time. I am a big fan. I would love having it not necessarily in my backyard, but right around the corner, something that I could walk to and would probably do so on a number of occasions. We've got to keep it on the outside corner. The pushback that we would get from approving something like this would be terrible and swift, I'm sure. Not just from the people in the community, but from Dollar Tree and the other businesses that we've had pushed out for this very, very thing. I think that designed properly, which MRW is very capable of doing, I've used them in the past myself, they could make this really an incredible store. I happen to be, it wasn't at Hearst or an ACE Hardware that I think about, but it was up here in the Pacific Northwest and they had a coffee shop. Put your coffee shop entrance on the street, have everybody come in that way. It seemed to be really, really an attractive thing for the business. It made it feel like a little homey, more of a local store. You know, it was really well done. Anyway, that's my two cents.
James, we've heard from you. Do you have something additional to add?
I've probably said more than I should have, Marv, but I really appreciate Mark Hendrickson's comments about, you know, the old boy system. I appreciate you sharing your feelings about that, Mark, and I agree with what he said. And I don't remember if it was Mark that mentioned the Mount America Credit Union, that might have been Marty Tidwell, but I really think they're a model for what we're trying to accomplish. And I just put a link here that maybe the architects could refer to or then go start looking. EnvisionUtah.org is the organization that we've been exposed to that talk about walkability and the importance of that for our state as we go forward. And I think that with the neighbors, I think the fact that they're going to get commercial in their backyard is just, that's kind of the way it is. You can't, you know, that's the way when we bought the properties, we understood that that's what was going to happen. But I think that we need to do our part and have them play by the same rules everybody else does.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions and comments on myself. The buffer zone was brought up. What did we talk about for Dollar Tree on the buffer zone? What was the distance there?
Well, there's a couple of things. When they had a 10-foot landscape strip adjacent to the neighbors, it was just landscape. But then the parking lot, and then so their building is actually quite a distance. I probably have their plan in my bag, but
Oh, that's all right.
It's a significant distance between the store and the residential property line. But adjacent to their property line, they did have landscape with trees. So they've got two buffers, you might say, the distance itself and then the 10-foot planting with trees along the residential boundary.
One of the commenters online talked about the structure height. This is 25 feet. Is that right, Buck?
That's what they list on their plan, 25 to the parapet wall.
So that's, we can go 35 on residents, right? It's not necessarily going to tower over anything except for their fence.
Yeah, I mean, the ordinance says in a PD commercial, you go up to 35. And the same with the residential, you go up to 35.
I appreciated Gina Gubler's comment that she actually recognized that sometimes we get thrown some nasty, some difficult things. This, I agree with probably the majority of the comments here have been that we can't, we can't really make an exception, even though we love Buck, we love his family, and we love Hearst and ACE Hardware. It's hard to make an exception for the remaining corner. And we haven't done that for the other one. That's my basic thought process on that. I think that there could be a solution. I agree with what Mark Weston said. I think you could make a really, really good plan that includes the store out front. I did have a question, Buck. I got to ask you when you're up with the mic. You said that ACE will not accept it out in front. Have you actually asked them that directly? Please do.
I didn't think that was going to happen. I thought that there would be, this is a commercial lot. We bought it because it was commercially zoned. We didn't feel that we'd have any, we made sure the ground was, we went in and tested the ground before we purchased it. We purchased the ground. It was very expensive to purchase so that we could put that size of store on it. The interesting part, Marv, was was the people we bought it said, are you going to put that store and then add some others to it? Now we're hearing that ours doesn't even fit. I says, no, it's just going to be this store. This is the size of store we need to build. I want to make that somewhat clear. But it appears from the neighbors, I will listen to you. I wasn't going to. Take it to council, let two votes on this. Bob, I know how you feel about it. It's actually not the best for our store. It won't, it will not be as good in some ways, maybe. So what I'm willing to do, so that you can, we can all go home tonight, is go back and look at it. And I just talked to our architect about it and said, I don't want anybody hurt by putting our store in this town. I'll put a for sale sign up on it tomorrow and we will not build it. I won't. There's other locations, there's other places for us to go. If we don't build this store, no ACE Hardware will come there, that I can promise you. Not because they won't, just because they'll build a 10,000-foot ACE Hardware and not the one we'll build. That's what the community needs. And if it's backing up to the homes, to the, but my feeling all the way through was, well, you know, you bought that property, you saw that it was commercially zoned. If you go to look at the commercial, it's a 35-foot, it can be a 35-foot building. If we sell it and somebody can come in, they can come in and who knows what they could put there. We don't stink and we were very careful with the things you talked about. Been in that for all these years, never, ever had that issue one time ever. So I promise you, that's not going to be the case for you. But I'm kind of hurt. I'm not hurt to the point that this isn't something that, is that what you want? We can go to the council. And who knows? Because your vote isn't the final vote. I'm not going to do that. I haven't even gone and talked to anybody about it. Sit back there. I'm not going to do that. I don't know, Bob, if I can design a store that puts on that corner that makes it financially work for us, that will do the kind of numbers that we have to do in order to make it financially feasible. I had hoped that you want us to be successful too. Not just have it a walkable community, but that you'd want this business. It's the largest store ever built in Santa Clara outside of Harman's in its history. I thought you would applaud us. I think you're misunderstanding.
Yeah, you are.
We are applauding you. We do want you to do it. We want you in the community, Buck. The challenge we have is the consistency with what we've mandated forward before us and what's come before you.
If you had have been here to the other, to the other public hearings, you'd have a little better understanding of.
I just didn't think, there was two issues. One is Dollar Stores. Much different. We understand. 9,500 square feet or 25,000 square feet, it sets out on the property different. We all have to know that. It sets on the property. This two acres is more than enough for a 25,000-foot store. It is. That works. But if this is what the city wants, what the council wants, I won't, I'm going to run that through there a little bit to make sure. We'll go back and relook at the design and see if there's any way and that we can make it to where it, I don't think it's the right design, guys. I think it really ruins that corner and not helps it. Put a 25-foot wall around there, as big as that's going to be on both sides all the way down. I think that is kind of difficult for the community. To be honest with you, I think it's the wrong, wrong, wrong choice. But if all of you feel that way, and that's what I've just heard, and we haven't voted on it, I've heard and that's what the neighbors feel, and I think that just about amounted to everybody around the wall. And I know some of them and I'm a member of this community. They would know that there was something commercial going to be built there when they bought there. But now they don't want that, so they have the right to come here and say what they said. So without any further on it, if you have any suggestions of me, we'll go back. They'll set us back, but we'll see if we can do a design, run it by ACE, see where we can get and see if we can work with you, Bob, and try to figure something out. And if we can't, then we'll just have to not build the store here.
Thank you for your patience.
I appreciate your comments. And I want to be clear that I've been on the record with all these folks before that they bought land next to commercial. They knew what the potentials were. I've had this challenge with the 35 feet could have come no matter what. They don't, you know, unless you've worked in that world, you don't understand that. And that's part of the challenge is they don't understand what the codes represent or what the building zones represent. It's a real challenge. The challenge I have, I love the building. I love the design. I love the work that MRW always does. By six, they've designed my building and they're doing another building for me right now. But the consistency is what I feel very strongly about. It's not the building. I want to be clear.
And it's not Hearst, not ACE.
Not ACE. It's the location.
Well.
On the property.
The location, the fact that we've approved other things and required other things for others, that we can't just ignore that. And so I look forward to that.
We're two years late. Maybe putting the store there, we may not be able to.
Well, we certainly hope that you.
I hope you can.
Yeah, we absolutely love Hearst and love your contribution to the community. We want to see you make it work, but in that configuration, we can't, in good conscience, and at least I'm speaking for myself, I can't in good conscience, having been through the meetings on the other ones, look at you and say, oh yeah, we can do that. So.
Okay, well, we'll go to work and see what we can do and 50/50, we'll see what happens.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So commission with Buck's, we probably ought to make this official.
Yeah.
And so we're looking for a motion to table this.
Let's see, did we close the public hearing? If not, let's close the public hearing then.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Why we have Selena here. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Should have done that before I asked for comments from the commission. I'm sort of new at this job. Yes, please come forward.
My name is Jacob Hearst. I'm Buck's son. I'm one of the ones that will work there. The only thing I want to say, it was with the security of the business, that the things that we will be selling in there, we deal with theft daily in all of our locations. And so one thing that we deal with and we want to make sure people understand is the security of our building as well as what's in it and our personnel. So when there's the talk about having multiple entrances to our building, it's really not possible with what we do because of our, how many we staff and our checkout stands. We're not going to be able to put two locations of checkout stands to keep our checkers safe and to keep products safe in the store. And so to think that we'd have an entrance on the street and also on the backside of the building really isn't feasible that way. And so that's the only comment I wanted to say with.
Let me clarify that for you. You're not required to have an entrance on the street.
I know, but what I was.
It's been suggested that way and Dollar Tree only has one entrance.
Okay, okay.
So I get what you're saying.
All I was trying to say is they were, you know, to say that our building is going to be so big on that corner and they're like, we'll just add another entrance or an exit to the building. And it's really not possible with certain things that we do sell in our stores for the security aspect of our staff and for the product. So I just want to.
I understand what you're saying. True. Thanks.
Thanks. Appreciate it. So now that we've closed the public hearing out of order, but we probably ought to make this official, even though we almost have a withdrawal of it from Buck. But we'll go ahead and ready, we'll entertain a motion from the commission. Normally it would be to recommendation to the city council to approve.
What are our options on this?
Recommend to the city council to consider approval or recommend to the city council non-approval.
You know, there's, yeah, a table is the option because it sounded like Buck was going to go back and maybe explore the option. Is that right? You're going to explore that? So it may be valuable to table it for a month or table it indefinitely until he comes back. And then we can. Okay.
Okay.
I think.
We'll just table it. Then we can table it until you are ready to resubmit, right? I mean, there's no time limit. We can't pose a time limit on you.
Well, the next meeting, Buck, could be, I think it's August 13th, I believe. Okay, so let's table it till the next meeting.
Okay. Do you need a motion to table that?
Yeah.
I make a motion that we table this until August 13th that Mr. Hearst can have some time to work with his architect and staff to bring some other options.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Mark and seconded by James. Call. All in favor, say aye.
Marv, can I just make one quick comment on this? I wasn't with Santa Clara City back probably 10 years ago when they came up with this vision for the corner. But I really applaud the city for coming up with a vision for something unique. It's, you know, not business as usual. It's a neighborhood commercial that fits into the neighborhood and people can walk to it. But I think part of that had to be the reduced impact to the neighbors. Because one of the problems we heard from the neighbors is it's a 25-foot building 10 feet from the residential property line. That is a serious impact. And I think when they, 10 years ago, when everyone, people were thinking about a plan, that walkability moves things to the corner and provides that buffer zone that Mr. Tidwell mentioned and, you know, gets the buildings away from that, you know, 10 feet from the property line. So there's much. So there's much less impact from the building that has that separation. So I think that's part of it. And, you know, and I, I'd say I applaud Santa Clara for what they're trying to do and be unique and.
Can we hear from Councilman Gray, if that's possible?
Because when it was planned, it was planned as a commercial development. And there were no public hearings for that commercial development. They changed the plan to a PD commercial and that allowed public hearings, which is a great thing. It gives impact. But what we're seeing, walking communities, if you take daybreak, which Bob has studied immensely. They're not working. So tell me how many of you have walked to the bank, to Costa Vida. I mean, to, yeah, the other, the Mexican place, the Harman's.
I haven't walked, but I've ridden my bike.
And, and we've driven.
And that's the challenge right there.
What I'm saying.
And I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to argue that when I have, I have.
Or on the corner, going to make that a walkable commercial development. And not to take away from what the plan was with Dollar Tree, but each individual one has to be looked at individually. Yes, we want to maintain an idea, but whose idea? Is it the citizens that want it walkable? Or is it those that are dictating to us what they think is best? And so anyway, to me, what you've done is great, tabling it so it can be looked at and possibly adjusted. But don't let influences outside of what the plan is influence your decision. Know that the city of Santa Clara needs commercial. They need sales tax revenue or our property taxes are going up. I mean, there's just certain things that are part of that aspect. And when you look at, I bought a lot next to commercial. Do I know what can be done in that commercial zone? If I don't, I shouldn't have bought the lot. But the absolute fact is we try and make adjustments for that because there isn't always that knowledge. But don't let that influence everything you do in making the decision. Thanks.
Thanks, Denny. All right. Thank you for your participation. We'll go on to the next item of business. Conditional use permit for accessory dwelling on Vineyard Drive. You, you have this one to introduce as well?
Yes. So this is a request for a conditional use permit for couple items. An accessory dwelling unit over a detached garage. The address is twenty-seven sixty-five Vineyard Drive. And also consider a request for additional height for the detached garage and additional size for the accessory dwelling unit. Chad and Ann Gates are the applicants. It's in a RA zone, half acre lots. And again, so there's, there's three components to it. One is to allow the second dwelling unit, which we applaud, you know, we encourage people to, the accessory dwelling units generally a good thing. So the additional height. And they're asking, the applicant shows a plan that has the roof line at twenty-eight feet, seven inches to the roof peak. And the, in our second unit, accessory dwelling unit, there's a provision that says the size of that unit should be between four hundred and fifty and eight hundred and fifty square feet unless otherwise approved by the planning commission. And the applicant requests that accessory unit have a floor area of a thousand and five square feet. So the, the setbacks in that RA zone are eight feet on one side. And then the opposite side would be at least twelve feet. Rear yard setback could be ten. Their site plan shows that at the closest corner to this garage and accessory unit, ten feet, and then the property line angles away from it. But at, at the very closest point, it'd be ten foot side yard. There's about fifty feet in the rear yard, so he's got some significant area. Again, the accessory unit is located above the detached garage and that detached garage would be just ten feet to the side of the existing home. The applicant indicates that part of his desire for this height is to match the roof pitch of the home, which is six twelve, well, no steeper roof pitch. So he, he wants that same roof design to match the home. And so, you know, I guess in summary, you're, he's got a request for an accessory dwelling unit and, which would be a thousand square feet. And the additional height of up to twenty-eight feet, seven inches. And I don't know if there's any neighborhood concerns on that or if we've had any comments. I might, the staff. If, and there may be, I don't know if there's anything on Zoom, but if there's no neighborhood objection, then staff think that it's a reasonable request.
I had one question. I went and looked at this today just so I had a better understanding. So the way his property goes right now, again, it goes to a rock wall and drops down. And that's how he picks up the difference in that going to the twenty-eight feet is because he's going to setting down to the road on that other piece of land. Is that right?
Uh, it could be. Actually, I haven't been.
I, can you hear me? I, I'm, I'm on Zoom.
Oh, great. Yeah, Chad.
Hey, um, it, it's only, it's twenty, it's, it, the code is twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty feet to the mid of the roof. And I only need twenty-two, ten, so I only need two and a half more feet. It's not to the, it's not to the top of the roof.
Well, actually, I think it is. And if you look at the Santa Clara zoning code, it measures height to the roof peak on a gable or pitched roof. Some cities, I think St. George's measures it to the midpoint. If you look in the, the code under definition, it says to the roof peak.
Oh, well, I talked. I don't have a problem with the height of the building. I just was trying to understand where you were getting the gain. So you're constructing this at the level of where that land's at right now, correct?
No, it would be a little bit higher and I'm taking, I would be taking out that rock wall.
Okay.
And then I would have that side of the, of the garage would actually be the retaining wall. So it, it would be up about the height of the code where my house sits up four feet above the road.
Okay. That, I just wanted to understand that a little better. I don't think there's an issue, in my opinion, looking at it, or as that roof goes. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
What did you say the code was? I mean, normal homes are thirty-five, but on the secondary dwelling, it's.
Uh, set on the accessory units, they're, they're twenty feet unless otherwise, you know, through a conditional use permit. Now, the other thing is that in the code, it talks about, one of the options on accessory dwelling unit is over a detached garage. So that almost guarantees that it's going to be above twenty feet. So.
It, it's on three quarters, just over three quarters of an acre. I think you guys said before it was a half an acre. But the property is just over three quarters of an acre.
I like the idea of having additional secondary units because of what we talked about in the past. Yep. Especially, I, I know Chad and I know it, he'll do a great job of that and it'll look like.
Match up his house, match his house.
Yeah, match his house.
That's your intent, right, Chad? Just to make it look like.
Yeah. Yeah. The garage is going to match all the front of my house, so it all looks the same.
Yeah.
So I have a quick question. So Bob, are you saying that the code says that it can only be twenty feet?
The accessory unit says twenty feet unless conditional use for higher.
Okay. So is that something we need to modify, do you think, if it's over the garage or is it just fine for that being acceptable to use every time?
I don't think it's been modified recently.
We, we had a look at that because if you have it above of the garage, it's automatic.
Guaranteed to go over it. So yeah, I don't know that the code's been changed, but they just do go through this process. I guess it, you know, it gives the neighbors an opportunity to come in and discuss and if they have issues.
Not, not to throw Ryan under the bus, but Mark threw me under the bus last, last week with the final sighting. But Ryan, how tall is your accessory?
At my house now?
Yeah. It's, it's.
It's way up there.
My doors are twelve feet and it's probably, no, yeah, twelve feet. It's probably sixteen, it's probably under twenty.
Really?
It is.
To the peak of the.
To the garage. Cause my house is two stories, so it looks, it probably. You're talking about the garage at my house. I don't think it's over twenty feet.
All right.
Cause my door is, my door is twelve feet to the top of the door and I don't think it's eighty inches, eight feet to the.
All right. Ignore that example. That was a bad example. It was.
But, but I would say I, I like that rule and the fact that if someone has, uh, this has come up in some subdivisions I've worked in. If someone has a single story house and then wants to put an accessory house or garage next to it. And they make a twenty-five foot tall garage, it, it does look out of place. No, no, if it's great with Chad's house, because Chad has a big two-story house or, or a taller house, a taller pitch roof. I just do think, you know, appearance matters.
I agree. So this allows us to be able to look at it.
And allows for that chance for your neighbor to voice their concern if they have any. What do we need?
One thing, I, I think that the garage is going to be taller than the house. Have you done the math on it, Chad?
Um, it'll be right close to the top of their house. Yeah. It, it's still sitting lower. My house sits four feet above the road and this is going to be probably about a foot and a half below my house as it is. So there's six feet, so it's going to be real close.
Yeah. And so with it pushed out actually closer to the street than the house, it's going to look really big. And I don't have a problem with any of your application, other than the fact I think you might want to look at pushing that a little further back. So it doesn't look bigger than the house, just from perspective.
Do we have that drawing that he did with his?
Yeah.
So, so that, what Mark just brought up was what, what my first thought was Chad was on the measurements. That's why I went and drove by and that's why I was asking the question about your, your, your rock wall. I think if you're within a foot of where you're at on your house, you're fine, but I don't see any.
He thinks you're fine.
That's going to be just the, is that the whole thing?
Yeah, you're almost there.
You're probably looking for the site plan or?
Yeah, I'm looking for that site, that right there. Okay. Looking at that answered my question. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We ready for a motion?
Are y'all shy or what?
I motion, we approve this.
There, there you go from, from the newbie, Ryan. That was very appropriate.
I'll second it.
So the motion is to consider, consider a conditional use permit as identified for Chad and Ann Gates, the applicants. Seconded by Mark. Um, any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 And we got the guys on Zoom raising their hand. Thank you. All right, we've done number three. Sorry about that result. Number four, consider a conditional use permit for Jim's RV, like plan amendment. Bobby, you introducing this as well?
Uh, yes. Uh, I think that, well, first of all, let me say, I, it's technically not under a conditional use permit. I think it's under the section where it says, uh, unique fence applications come to the planning commission for approval. So we don't have to necessarily, we're not, you know, under the conditional use permit framework necessarily. But the idea is that six foot, so this is at Jim's RV. Probably everybody knows they're on East Santa Clara Drive. Uh, the fence is intended to provide security for the RVs in storage while waiting for either repair, i.e. service work or while waiting to be picked up. We do have the applicant, Representative Doug Rogers here tonight. So the ordinance, uh, it's in section seventeen point twenty-eight. Limit, generally limits fence height in the city to six feet maximum unless an unusual circumstance exists. And there are obviously unusual circumstances such as enclosing tennis courts, et cetera, and other situations. Mr. Downs has constructed a chain link fence for storing the RVs on a very temporary basis. Again, while waiting for service or while waiting to be picked up. He requests permission to place one to, I'm not sure how much, but one to three strands of smooth wire on top of the existing chain link fence for security purposes. Um, I think he is aware, he's been told that the city does not allow barbed wire in the commercial or residential zones. So he's just would, is asking for a smooth wire pulled straight on top of the six-foot fence. So the concern here is, you know, is the aesthetic, what is the aesthetic impact of adding additional strands of wire on top of the existing fence? Uh, you know, either he's from Santa Clara Drive or from the neighbors on the south. So, uh, when the applicant or, and I think it was Doug Rogers came to the planning commission for when this was being discussed by the planning commission. Selena essentially had looked up and listened to the tape and asked, and Jason Lindsay, the planning commissioner, asked Doug Rogers, what will the fence look like? And Mr. Rogers replied, it will have chain link with slats. So, uh, the planning commission, you know, can consider this and the aesthetic impact. And, uh, you know, whether this warrants additional height above six feet, your call on this. I think there are some neighbors concerned. There was a, a letter submitted or sent in from Roy Phillips. Who was concerned and you may be on Zoom tonight, I don't know, but he did submit some verbal comments and I'm not sure what else or if you got other comments. Devin, is there anything else that, that I should mention on this?
No, I, I think that's just fine. And just to reiterate, it's, it was listed as a conditional use permit request. That's not technically what we're looking at. We're looking at, do we want to allow this kind of a, a barrier or fence at that height?
And the difference between what would normally be, there's some pictures that you can show too, right? The difference between this request and normal is, is six feet. It's still six feet, but it's got an extension of three wires above. What, what's the voltage of those wires? Pretty small.
While he's pulling that up, a question I have is what is the, what's the timeframe on finishing the fence on the west side? Cause I noticed I drove by today and it wasn't finished at this time.
Come on up.
Yes. That's our site plans on the screen now.
Yeah, we're scheduled as soon as we can get on the planning commission again, I think, which is the August thirteenth. He, he's purchasing that property and we're going to level it over so that he can put the vehicles waiting to be worked on. And ones that are done waiting to be picked up.
Extend his parking.
Yeah. And it'll be the wall out on Arrowhead Trail will be exactly as the two walls with the bushes and everything done. And, uh, you know, it should be look great.
That would make sense because that wall looks unfinished. That one edge kind of looks like there's going to be erosion issues, but that would make sense why they haven't.
Yeah, it'll all be cleaned up.
You had some, you had some pictures of it, of it, didn't you? In the.
I thought we had pictures in the packet too.
In the packet. In the packet?
Were they actually photographs? I don't
Yeah, they are.
Five of them.
Or C, 15 dot 5 megabytes, so. They were PDF pictures that were included in our
There we go.
Does that work?
That's the existing.
Let's see what else.
So there's your 6 foot with the slats.
Yep.
And then you're saying that he's purchased this other piece west, so that'll continue on.
Continue on and right around, so that he's got room for his customers. Let me, if I may, let me read you uh, comment. I don't know how many of you know Jay McAllister, that's Jim's, as we call him Zip, right?
Zip.
Zip. Uh, he is, is Jim's insurance man. He says, state auto insurance company requires a security fence around a building. Barbed wire is preferred, smooth wire is acceptable for security purposes. Without wire, insurance costs will go up 30% and put the shop in a high risk area. And, and that's, I mean, you know, there's, I don't know if you're familiar with smooth wire, that's it. Excuse me. All it'll do is go around the top. It gives more strength to the top of the fence. And, and just keeps, he's gotta protect them. Those vehicles that go in there, I was just there, go look at the Ford trailers that are in there. You're talking a lot of money and he's gotta protect those. So.
Is there any, uh, any objection? You guys think of any reason why this wouldn't be acceptable?
Yeah, Marv, um, I, I wanna put this into the record, it's, it's a little unusual, but we did get a voicemail that was left with my office from one of the neighbors, Mr. Roy Phillips. And I'm just kind of passing on his comments, his voicemail, but um, what he states is that um, the applicant, applicant has been told all along that this was not appropriate, uh, or allowed. Um, to Phillips and his neighbors are 100% against it. Um, his position is that it makes the neighborhood like, look like a prison. Um, and his hope is that the city would not even consider, uh, the request. So just passing on that comment from Mr. Phillips.
The, the yard right to the west of it on the street side has barbed wire fence. So, you know, and that's, and that's a residential. This one is a commercial and he's just trying to protect what he's doing there.
It has barbs above the
Above the 6 foot?
No, it's only, no, no.
It's a previous paddle fence type thing.
Old paddle fence.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Huh? No, I'm talking
Directly to the west.
Where the little trailer is and stuff.
Did they have animals in there at one time? Is that it?
I don't.
I would imagine.
Yeah, I would assume that had animals in it.
That type of fence it is. The, the ordinance allows barbed wire in ag zones and and across street is residential agriculture.
I can sympathize with, um, requirements coming down from a, from an insurance company.
Yeah.
I've been there, I know what that, what that does.
Well, I would hope that each of you agree that now that it's all done and in operation. It turned out to be a pretty nice place and he's doing a great business there.
We've gotten some flack on the metal building, just to be honest with you.
What other options are there for a security fence? Like what exactly is a description of a security fence for insurance purposes? Does it have to be rolled or can it be straight or?
It, it can be just like that, which is what they call a smooth wire or a barbless wire. And, uh, so you can have that on, all it'll do is go around the arms that stick up there and keep people from climbing over.
Does a security fence have a certain height requirement?
They say 6 feet. And that's why we're there with 6 feet. Uh, actually on the part between us and the little consignment store, it's only 4 feet.
Right. Broke heart.
Cause that's back of the gates where we don't have to worry. So.
Would, would, uh, security cameras offset the barbed wire or not the barbed wire, but the wire extension? I mean, if you talk to the insurance agent about that, maybe that would be another alternative to keep his insurance cost down.
But you still have people going over the wire and, and whether they get filmed or not. How do you, how do you follow up? The wire is a deterrent to keep people from climbing over.
I'm just, in this, in the spirit of brainstorming, what if you turn the, the angle the other way, so the angle was inside the, inside the fence?
Well, then you're, then you're going against where people will be working. And that one along the whole west side will be, it's only temporary, it will all be gone as soon as the new wall and stuff.
I, I just have a hard time. I don't like the look of it, like, like, uh, as I said previously, it does look more prison-esque. Or industrial.
Well, that's a commercial area right there and that's what he's trying to do is protect it.
It's just my opinion.
Anybody else want to express an opinion or ask a question of Mr. Rogers? Shall we?
I wasn't involved in the original approval. It sounds to me like, uh, there was appears to be a feeling of misleading. If he was told that it was a chain link fence and it would be 6 feet and now we're I get the security thing, but.
It's 6 feet with the little arm sticking out to hold this stuff. Is all it is. Same height that it was always designed for.
Maybe I misunderstood. I thought James and Lindsay said chain link fence with slats, not chain link fence with security bars.
Gee.
You can, on that picture right there, you can see where the arms stick out to hold the wire.
That gives you your other foot, takes you to 6. But see, again, my understanding when we spoke with you again, and it's, I'm glad that the staff put this in was it was gonna be a 6 foot fence with slats and nothing mentioned about a security tack on top. And I'm, I just have a hard time with the security uh, portion of that fence. I have a hard time with, with fences otherwise. I understand why they have to be there, but I I just don't see the need for this wire, I guess, is my and I know, I know that I've got 16 video cameras around my building that work really well, but you're right, they don't stop the person from entering the space.
Well, and, and the thing is, you look at the insurance cost, that's the big thing. And he's got, like I say, you know, if any of you have those motor homes, they're very expensive and he's gotta protect them immediately. Somebody could go over the fence and, and start tearing into one quick and that's what he's gotta protect, so.
So just a question, if you don't mind.
Hey, James Call is on Zoom, he, he has a comment. James?
So why wasn't the fence built chain link up to 6 feet if that was kind of an agreement, instead of doing it 5 feet chain link and then adding this other piece with a wire?
Well, the, the fence is already in, it was put in. And then he decided he needed, his insurance people said, we gotta be able to protect it better and that's why he's looking for the the wire around the top and the angle out there.
How many strands of wire are we talking?
Uh, I think there's, uh, 3, uh, notches that he can do, he can do 2 or 3.
3 in the
Yeah, you can see them on
See them on
I think there's 3 in those.
So just a follow up to my question is, what, what does the insurance company feel about a 5 foot fence with a wire strands versus just a 6 foot chain link fence?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
He said, what, what would the insurance company say about this is a 5 foot fence with wire strands? Versus just a 6 foot fence? Is it?
The 6 foot fence, you have to have, if you're gonna get the reduction in insurance cost, you gotta have the the wire of some kind on it. Uh, and again, they, they
Just having a 6 foot chain link fence with slats, you're saying does not accomplish?
It does not get the, the insurance that he needs.
Is there any other application for the security portion?
Where, where the wire is? Well, the best way it is right now on that fence is where it's away from everybody except for somebody that's trying to come in.
But some other application? So that it doesn't look like an institutional? Is there any options that way? Or that, is it? Cause I, I agree, you have to have the things coming out here. Rather, the kids will just jump right over and navigate if they're not or the whoever.
That's, that's the way it was designed. And now he came back because he wanted to add the the wire on it for strength and safety.
And basically, cause he, his insurance agent told him he had to or he's gonna get a 30% increase.
Yeah, and, and in any business, that's a big amount, so.
Uh, Mark and James on the, on Zoom, do you have any comments or questions? Further?
Uh, have him call a different insurance agency. I've had to do that a number of times. Um, that would be my first blush at it, just to see if everybody's got the same rules. My guess would be no. Um, it also sounds like his agency doesn't really understand what kind of area this is in. And is expecting it in more of an industrial area?
Been there a lot.
The, the age, maybe not the underwriter.
Yeah, probably not the underwriters. And maybe it just might be a guy checking boxes. Does it have this? Box is checked and that's what happens a lot. Um, I mean, Santa Clara is not necessarily a high crime area. But I would check a secondary, get a secondary quote. I've done it a lot.
So let me ask you. Somebody said just a minute ago that one of the big people complaining about this is across the street, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Devin read that.
Yeah.
The same guy that, that made him put up the wall and the the plants on the wall, in case you're interested. Jim had to sign a forever agreement to keep those things up and going and growing forever. Show me anybody that's ever had that. I talked to, uh, my landscape architect. He does all kinds of major projects. And he said the most he's ever been able to put on it is 1 year. We did it, it's being taken care of, it's got the stucco, I think if you look at it. Uh, we've gone the extra mile to try to make it right.
Well, and you probably know, part of the grief was that when the neighbors came back, when the original plan was, that wall was gonna have a 4 foot offset.
So are we, are we gonna go back?
No, I'm just saying, I, you know, that's just history of you. That's just part of the reason that maybe the long-term maintenance came to play. Is that the 4 foot offset never happened?
Well, I, I appreciate what you, if the, the tears look great, the I'm sure the plants will look great when they get grown. Uh, the fence, I don't even have a problem with the fence. And as a matter of fact, I don't even have a problem with the, with the wires, they do. It does rub me a little wrong that they're that they're sticking out there. It is a commercial area. But I'm hearing from the, from the other commission members that maybe maybe they're not so in tuned to, um, what's your, what's your pleasure, commission?
Can, can I ask one more question? So you're, you're expanding to the west. Is this same top cap gonna be all the way up the side of that? To where the fence is currently? So you're just gonna expand the, the temporary fence out all the way?
The fit, there's no fit, the one going across there, yeah, well, it'll be exactly the same.
Same location.
Yeah.
Across what's the north side of the
Step up. Yep.
And so most likely this wire will also go across the front. Where the fence is that opens, the gate that opens? It'll
No.
Close the hole back.
It's not there. The gates are, it just, it'll go across the back and partly up the side to where it's the consignment stores where their property goes and from there.
So insurance doesn't require it completely enclosed?
It goes up to where his gate is.
Right.
Which is about
But that, that's on the east side, Doug. I'm asking about the west side. I see where it ends on the, on the east side, cause the gate's behind where it ends. What's gonna happen on the west side? Is that saying? There's a name for those, I can't think of the name of it. Extension, extension arm, is that gonna be all up the west side? To the very front, cause if you do it that way, it goes to the very front of the building. In this picture that we're looking at. That um, temporary fence is gonna, I mean, naturally we understand it's gonna move. So my question is, on that west side, is that arm gonna go all the way up and then are we gonna have 25 feet of an arm sticking out, go facing north side of the fence to Santa Clara?
Mark, they're still designing that.
I don't know. See, that, that's the, those are the things that we
Yeah, I understand.
So at that juncture, you'd come back in and present that fence? Well, you already said you'd be coming in in the next meeting.
We're coming in in August 13th.
Yeah.
For that property.
Commissioners, just really briefly, we've covered a lot of, a lot of worry and there's talk about insurance and so on. The, the question today is in the, in the opinion of the commission, does the fence impair the intent and purposes of the land use code of Santa Clara City? So all those general policy questions about aesthetics and buffers and things like that. Just wanted to kind of help focus the discussion.
What's your, thanks Devin, what's your opinion on that?
You know, my personal opinion doesn't, you know, this is a, this is not really a legal question. I think it's a question for the commission to decide, is this in harmony with what we're trying to accomplish with the, the, the general land use code?
So Bob, will you, will you help us out, understand what, what we're trying to, um? What are we comparing this, this, what standard are we comparing this fence against? What are we trying to, what do we have to meet?
Yeah, I, I don't know if there's a standard, say what the code says and, and just headed up, uh, though for somewhat unusual request, uh, in which I think this falls under. Is there justification or do you feel okay about increasing the height? And having, uh, you know, these additional strands of wire on top of the fence? Um, I, I think it's, it's, it's get down to, you know, you, you, it's a balancing act, the neighbors' concerns, aesthetics and all, and, and the app owner's concerns about security. And I don't know if there's somewhat of a middle ground. I wonder instead of 3 wires, I mean, I can, 3 wires across the top. Would 1 wire do that or something? I mean, to me, it really gets down to aesthetics and I'm sure the neighbors. They, you know, they are trying to minimize their impact and not look like it's an impound yard across the street or, you know, something else that requires this kind of fencing. So it's, it's a balancing act, I guess, is trying to min, you know, minimize the aesthetics.
Let's balance it and we'll go 2, you want 1, we want 3, go 2. It's like the, the the sidewalk down there on, on Arrowhead Trail, it was supposed to be 4 feet. It's now put in at Jack's request, it's 6 feet all the way across, instead of a rock to the wall, it's poured cement all the way to the wall.
Yeah, so maybe there's a compromise. I mean, that's an option on the table.
My fear is, is, is just like everything else, consistency, it sets a precedence if we I'm not really against the security aspect of it or, or anything like that, but I'm just afraid that if we start allowing stuff in more of a commercial, you know, you, you talk about it being industrial, it's not an industrial, it's commercial. And if we allow it here, even with 1 wire, it still has, has the same appearance to me. And it just kinda sets that precedence, then it's hard for us to say no down the road if someone else wants to put in a tow yard or or, or, I don't know. It's just, that's, again, it's just my opinion.
So talking about, about precedence, I'm, I'm thinking about the, the Goodyear shop over there. And the fence all the way back of that. Is, does that not have wires on? Is that just a plain fence?
I don't know.
I don't remember.
The other part of that is that, uh, it, does it meet the the intent or the, the feel of the property? The fact that it's, uh, and I mentioned this a little before. I'm not I would have preferred to see some kind of a facade on the, on the metal building, but that wasn't a deal killer for me, but I've gotten flack for that metal building. for that metal building and in my mind, does that is a it is sort of industrial and it meets the it sort of matches the building. I don't know, you know, it's the buildings.
It does match the building. Yeah. I think the other hard part too is it is that it's the border between a residential community and a commercial community, you know, and normally, I don't know what you normally see, but you know, it it is hard just because it has such a visual issue, you know, anyone that drives down that road sees it. I mean, it's it's not going to be bad from the main road. It's just it's mainly from the back where it looks bad. I grew up just one street over from there and and as far as safety goes, I'm not really concerned, you know, anyone can steal anything, but I I don't I just don't like it.
We've we've talked at length about this. Do we have anybody who wants to make a motion?
Well, at this point, I don't know what motion because if we aren't, it looks like we're motioning for a conditional use permit, but Devin said that's not what we're really motioning for.
Are we motioning for a your vision of a fence plan or?
Yeah, it's it would be let me just read this chapter. Okay, so the planning commission shall review all requests for any type of fence not specifically identified in this chapter and may approve said fence if in the opinion of the commission, the fence does not impair the intent and purpose of this title. You know, so I guess back to the intent and purpose, and I think that falls back into, you know, aesthetics. My mind, I just wondering, would security cameras with, you know, today, security cameras are common or everywhere, would that not provide the security that the insurance people are looking for if if Mr. Downs had ample digital cameras that surveyed this property? Would that work?
Does that keep them from going over the fence?
Or or something that's tied into alarm. Something that's tied into alarm system that maybe a motion detector.
Yeah, motion detector where the lights come on or something. I don't know. I'm just asking the question.
I don't know.
Well, I don't know either, but maybe.
So I have a maybe it's not a helpful comment, but the question when we asked about the cameras, the question was asked, will I keep them from going over the fence? I have three sons. I don't know how high you'd have to make that fence so they couldn't go over.
Yeah.
So we can't make the fence high enough that nobody can get over it. If you have a $400,000 RV over there and I want to steal the emblem off the front of it because it looks cool hanging in my room, I don't know how how you can make a fence tall enough for that, especially if the front has a has a little puny five foot fence. I can just hop the fence and wait till there's not a car driving by and I can jump that fence and I'm 50 years old, so.
James, you're on you're on you're on the record. I hopefully hopefully they don't lose a couple of emblems off a couple of RVs.
Well, at least you know where I live to come find them.
Well.
I would think an electronic device would be a lot more with an alarm than if kids wanted to, they could just snap that stuff.
Hey, you're.
You're not gonna.
So so my question to you is, are you willing to pay the cost to put up the?
I'm not the landowner or the property owner. I'm the person trying to suggest.
I wish you guys and I don't want to get into it, but I wish you could appreciate how much extra effort Jim has gotten into on that piece of property. That it's unbelievable because of things that have happened right here and across the street and what have you. We tried to get along and make it work and make it a beautiful project and you know.
Can I ask you a question? It doesn't sound like there's overwhelming support to approve this at this juncture. You're coming back next next month. What does it? Does it hurt you at all the way to go back, talk to the insurance agency if there's other solutions? And come back before us next month as part of your other, the rest of your?
I wish I wish I had my paper from the mayor that got right involved with this thing when we were trying to get a CO. Corey Bundy said, you do this, you can have a temporary CO and get it done. One of those things was to get the fence done. We put it up and they put the the arms on and then all of a sudden it all went backwards. I mean, it just it's.
He doesn't have it. He doesn't have a CO right now?
Yes, he does.
He does. Okay.
Yeah, and we did. They wouldn't let us get a CO till the sidewalk and the curb were done down over the edge and and all kinds of things. And that's all done. We're trying to get along. He just in talking with these insurance guy, they felt a need for more protection, more security on that fence.
So I understand that the the hurdles that you've had coming up here, we sympathize with with you and and the owner. But the the question is, is there something pressing in the next four weeks that he needs to have this answer now? Or can he wait till the next the next planning commission?
You you go to the inspectors and tell them that we can stay CO and and operating there until this is decided.
So it was a it was a conditional CO then?
Temporary.
That was a temporary on on getting an answer from this meeting tonight.
About the fence?
About the fence.
And what was there? So this is Corey. What was his comment? That it's got to be approved? That the arms on it have to be approved or?
Yeah, he said, we we went in, we were going to put a barbed wire fence. We said, no, we'll put a smooth barbedless fence. That's what he put in. They had the arms up there and they said, no, we better wait until it's approved. And so that's why we're here.
Or or some solution arrived at. I I don't think from a code standpoint, I'm not an expert on the building code. I don't I don't think that's going to create any more complications for you to to wait until we get, you know, get this figured out.
Like I say.
You've got to see a temporary CO, right?
We do.
They're not going to shut you down for not having putting up this wire or anything.
Okay, I wish I had my phone so you could see all the threats that we've said, you do this or else, you know, I mean, guys, they don't represent you very well at all. And and there's a couple of people in the city that are exploring that right now. I don't want problems. We want to just get it done, get it, keep it going so he can be protected. And like I say, all that fence on the west will be totally taken and when we move clear down and that will be resolved, but you know, it's.
Devin, is there anything that we can? I mean, I don't know whether our hands are tied between, I don't know how long the temporary CO lasts or is there any kind of recommendation that we can make that 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 stays?
Yeah.
Stays active?
I don't think that that their CO is in jeopardy for the next, you know, I think we have time to resolve this. Probably more Jim's anxiousness to get the issue up and and get his insurance thing taken care of, but I don't think it's unreasonable to continue it until the next meeting and and see if if the security cameras will meet the insurance requirements or get some of those answers.
But my question is, with the things that we've been promised and that were not upheld, can you promise me that we're okay to keep business going until that 13th?
We're a land use planning body. The question for us today is, is this fence in harmony with the intent of the land use code? And I want to make it clear as well that the reason we're here is that this additional, you know, the straight wire was not a part of the original application. So the reason that that there was a a question that was raised was because there was a fence, a feature that was being installed that was not approved as part of the planning commission's original application process. So the the only question today, you know, if the planning commission wants a table, that's fine. But the question today, we're not going to not going to get into CO questions. It's it's really a land use question.
Our position on this doesn't affect any of these other conditions that are getting bannered around because of the being just a land use.
So what you're yeah, so what you're saying is our decision needs to be, does it does it meet the the intent of the zone? And and that and the land use around it and that's it?
Correct.
That sort of changes my perspective a little bit.
Yeah, I would think that he is looking for either a thumbs up or a thumbs down from us so that he can move on and keep get his client in business as quickly as possible. Is that accurate?
Yes, we ought to keep him going. I mean, he's right now busier than you can imagine.
No, I understand. I think that the pushing him off another month is just a month of business that he's not doing. And.
That would be if he was had to close down or.
He's operating.
Yeah, right, right. But he's operating without insurance at this point, probably.
No, he's got insurance. He's just paying a lot more for it.
Yeah.
30% more. And like I said, you know, he's actually had two days ago, a guy said, is this yard secure? And you look at some of those motorhomes and they're pretty fancy, got all kinds of stuff in it and, you know, they they try their best to protect them and.
Yeah, I I have a little comment on that, though, Doug. I just dropped my very expensive boat off yesterday to be repaired. They assume no liability. They they it states right there where you take the car in or the boat in and you also sign a thing that they assume no liability while the car's in their possession. So I I have mixed on that one. I'm trying to. I understand what he's trying to do, protect his clients, I get it, but I know for from my experience, they assume no liability.
Maybe you better go talk to Zip.
Well, I didn't work on boats, but.
They post that they don't assume no liability, that they can get a claim for anything.
I I get that because I get sued for stupid stuff all the time.
You're right.
Okay, well, I think we've. Does anybody want to continue to discuss this? Do you have further? Further things to bring out or are you ready for the fight emotion?
You know, I appreciated what the young Hearst kids said about one of their big things is security too, and that's getting worse and worse. I'm sure each of you know that from what you pay for insurance, so.
I'll do I'll just weigh in. I can't.
Can I ask one more question?
Please do.
Just to be clear, because so with the insurance possibility, it's just a six foot fence requirement. It's not a six foot fence or a five foot fence with wires on top angled. It's just a six foot fence.
It's a six foot fence, but if you put the wires on the arms, it goes down 30%.
So if it's a six foot fence without wires on top, it's still 30% higher. If it's seven foot, it's still as long as the wires are on the top, it's still 30% higher.
That's right.
So it's the razor wire appearance is that's what saves the insurance.
And you know, several people talked to Jim about using the razor wire and he said, no, I don't want that.
Right.
That's why we went to the smooth barbed wire.
Any other questions? My my opinion, I don't necessarily certainly, and I'm not going to make the motion because I'm the acting chair, but I don't think it's that far off from the existing building to have to have some wires and some security fence around there. I don't necessarily like it, but given that definition that that Mr. Snow gave us, it it does sort of fit the it the the purpose and and the building, so that's just my opinion. I'm.
So I have a I have a question for you, Marv, if that's okay. So just because I don't really understand this probably as well as everybody else, but if they're making an application for a conditional use and they're asking the city to do something that we're not necessarily obligated to do, so it seems like the burden is on them to convince us that this is something that would be beneficial for the city to do. Is that right or am I misunderstanding that?
It's not a conditional use.
What was it? I'm sorry.
No, but I think the rest of his comments are probably right. I mean, I think the applicant has, you know, provide evidence or convince planning commission that what repositing is is pretty pretty necessary, right? I mean, and that's I think.
Well, and the fact that it's not barbed wire. They've made a concession to be smooth wire.
Right.
I'm with I'm with with Marv. I don't like it. I just don't like the aesthetic. I don't like the feel. I don't. It concerns me to have that industrial feel right at the entrance of our our community. But we're not doing a conditional use. We're doing a land use. Is it permitted within this land use? So there's our challenge, ladies and gentlemen. We've got to determine if it's permitted within the land use. That's the model.
Just to clarify, this is Devin Snow. It's not a conditional use, but the but the question is, you know, is this is this impair the purposes of the of the land use code? So it is in your discretion. Conditional use permits come in. You, the state law says that you must grant. You can impose conditions on that use, but in general, you're going to grant a conditional use permit. This request is a little bit different. They're saying, okay, this isn't a fence that's specifically allowed under this chapter. We're asking for something different and so it's it's within the planning commission's discretion as to whether to allow this specific kind of fence.
And so just to follow up with that and and kind of what you were saying, Mark Hendrickson, is that I guess where it kind of I have a little beef with it is I just think like I I don't know that I'm convinced that this is beneficial to the city of Santa Clara. I can see where it could be a benefit to the landowner where they don't have to go renegotiate a deal with their insurance agent and but I I guess I just didn't see that that they had a compelling argument and then we're going to be, it seems like we'd be obligated to allow this now in all commercially zoned areas, right?
Like perhaps like zoned commercial. I mean, this is. Yeah. Had a question from the the back wall has two four foot walls before the chain link. Does the insurance know know that? That was a question that I had.
I'm sure they do.
Texted to me, somebody watching it on Zoom, so.
That that two four foot walls makes it even more accessible to that fence, so.
Does the temporary operating thing that you have, does it have an expiration date or it's just tonight?
I'm sorry.
The the temporary that you received from Corey Bundy, just till tonight, does it have an expiration on it or is it?
I don't believe so. I don't believe that be the case.
So it's not?
You know, and I talked to Corey a few days ago about the agenda. I knew he was going to be on town vacation. He just said, did you mention any code issues about, you know, temporary CO or anything like that? He just said, you know, you got neighbors that don't want it and you got the applicant who wants it and, you know, the planning commissioner's going to have to balance out the competing interests. And so he never mentioned that.
And the neighbors.
No, there's an urgency. The code's, you know, I'm going to shut it down. None of that it was ever come about.
They would like to get a final CO.
Yeah, obviously.
So can they still get a final CO with a five foot fence?
Can you?
Can you?
I don't know.
Yeah, you can, but I think it's not what.
Yeah, there's nothing so that that doesn't really prevent him from getting a CO or not. If we say we only want it to be either a just a straight slap fence, not the angles on the top. The only thing that bothers me is the angles. I wouldn't care if it was a six foot fence as long as it didn't have the.
Well, the six foot fence is there because that's what was designed.
So it's already a six foot fence?
Yes. Yes.
Is the chain link, so that's sort of confusing. We've, we've hit that several times. The chain link fence, the top, the top bar on the chain link is six feet, not five feet.
That's right.
Okay.
So I, that was actually my question, uh, some time ago, and I was told in this meeting that it was six feet to the top of the extensions.
Is it, he said, he was, he was under the understanding that, uh, it was six feet to the top of the extensions, but you're saying.
I was under that pressure.
Bar of the chain link.
Oh, it's, uh, the chain link fence that was put in is a standard six-foot.
Six-foot fence.
Which was approved with the original.
Yeah.
That's what we.
That's why we're, we're here.
The extensions that are the question.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess for me, I think that that would cause me some heartburn on, as a member of the planning commission. If we've approved a six-foot fence and now we're coming back to add the extensions to it. That, I, I, I don't think I would feel comfortable with that because that's what we've already laid out for them.
I, he was talking to me, I'm sorry.
He was, he was talking in general, his comment.
Hear that well. Too much time around equipment.
Yes, I think James is right. I think, uh, I'm ready to make a motion that he's got a six-foot fence. It was on the plan. That was what is required by Corey. He could move in, get his final CO if we just say, leave it at six feet, you can't extend it. And then he just has to go and deal with his insurance agent.
Is that a motion, Mark Weston?
I said, I'm willing to make a motion. I, I would like to make a motion that we, uh, deny the conditional use permit for the, uh, I guess it's not a conditional use permit, is it? It is, uh, for the fence extension.
Fence extension permit.
At 2397 Santa Clara Drive, uh, so that the applicant can get his final CO.
We have a motion.
I, I would second that, just with a clarification that it's a, a fence permit.
He just asked, we clarify that it's a fence permit, not a conditional.
Okay, we have a motion.
One other question, it's, it's, it's not a fence permit, it's just to deny the request, uh, for the straight wire fence extension.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, Devin.
We have a motion to deny the fence request for the straight wire fence. And the second, the, the motion was from Mark Weston, the second's from James Call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I would have voted opposed. So you know. Okay, thank you. That's a tough one.
Blood art lately.
Yeah, that, that was a tough one, but it's a problem with him and his agent. It's not our problem.
Yeah, that's right.
And it's a problem with the precedence too, like.
Yes.
It creates more opportunity for, I was, things like that. I was gonna try to pull up my computer.
In my.
Computer in a crash, but usually I'll pull up, uh, go to meetings. I mean, uh.
Yeah.
Google Earth.
Yeah.
And try to see, because I'm, those other, we may have already, we may already have three strand wire and.
I don't think we do because.
The only place we do is around the radio towers up at the park.
And I went down around and that, I looked for places that it would, I would think that it would be, and Mark Weston, didn't you say it by the parks, the only place you.
There is the substation.
But it's around a substation. It's a secure, it's a safety issue. I don't know, it's really hard. I think, folks, we've been given a lot of curveballs, a lot of challenges lately because of the fact that some of our stuff's just a little bit ambiguous. And I, I feel for our predecessors that have had to deal with this for years. So I think if I could say something for the group, we all need to be cognizant of these code issues and do what we can to clarify these code issues so we don't have issues for these folks. We just, we need to do, on our side, we need to help and under the direction, do a better job of those types of things.
How do you suggest we do that, Mark? I mean, what do you, what do you see?
We need to read the codes before they come to us and, uh, we need to have a better understanding of the codes and why they're utilized the way they are. And, uh, you know, there's some ambiguities that, that we could probably make a real effort to get cleaned up. I know Lena, Lena was working on a lot of that stuff and.
You know, that effort's still underway. We're going.
Oh, yeah.
And, and Devin, we're, we're going through the zoning code, chapter by chapter. And actually, because of the PD thing has been such a headache, jumped ahead to clean that up. And like I say, that's on your next agenda and, and that's a good cleanup and a hands off. Devin's done a great job on it. It's, it's been long overdue.
Challenge.
Yeah, it is a challenge because it's one of the most complicated chapters. And so Devin's done a great job and it's, it's down to just a few little minor issues remaining.
Okay. Yeah, did you?
What did he say, Marv? We can't hear him.
He's okay. Doug, you're okay.
He just requested that he get a written, uh, version of, of what the proceedings that just happened, so the minutes basically. All right, that brings us to any discussion items? Seeing none, we'll proceed. Approval of the minutes? Anybody had a chance to look through those?
I'm, I have reviewed those minutes and I make a motion that we approve the minutes as recorded and presented to us.
Motion by, and I will second that.
Mark in motion.
Seconded by Curtis. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, adjournment, adjournments, the only thing left between us and, and dinner.
Wait, you were going to get dinner. What happened?
I, I said a bite, whole bite.
There's a difference between that and dinner.
There's definitely a difference. This, this is dinner called the K power bar.
So I, I have another question. So one of the challenges that we're, we're continuing to have, and right now we can't get, we can't get training from. This is outside the bounds of what needs to be.
Are we done?
We're done. So leagues of cities and towns has training and on.